All right, thank you very much.
By me started.
So with you.
Okay, I'm calling to order the planning commission meeting. I'm for Emeryville as of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and the time is six thirty nine. We have a slight delay due to some A V setup, but we're ready to go. Chad, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Henme.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Ming.
Here.
Commissioner Wax.
Here.
Vice Chair Dram is absent, and Chair Ghazoni.
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, now is the time for public comment on anything that is not be that is within the purview of the planning commission that is not on the agenda for this evening. We don't appear to have anybody here. So Chad, do we have any online speaker calls cards?
Not for items not on the agenda.
Okay, so then we will move off from general comments to approval of the action minutes for December's minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the December minutes?
Uh, yes, there was a wanted to correct one statement said from my wife's statement, Lisa Finley's statement, it said that she asked for a six-story height along Christie, and it's actually a step back at six stories, so it would still be an eight-story building, but would step back at six stories.
Okay, so we can make that correction. There any other comments? We have a motion to approve in a second with those comments having been made.
I'll move to approve the action minutes with the amendment.
Second.
Okay.
On the motion to approve the December fourteenth, twenty twenty three minutes with the amendment as noted by Commissioner Henme made by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Wax, call the role, excuse me, Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ming.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram is absent, and Chair Ghazoni.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, now is time for the director's report. Chad, do you have a report for us?
I do. Wanted to point out a new face with us. As you know, as you may know, Maggie might have her administrative in retired, and so filling in is Carrie Vedney, and is doing a great job, and so say hi to her. And thank you to Carrie for for helping us out in the interim. I wanted to first bring to the commissioners' attention, there's there remains a vacancy on the Parks and Rec Committee that is specifically for Planning Commissioner, and the term that's vacant right now runs through June thirtieth of of this year. That committee meets every month on the third Wednesdays at six P M. at the E C C L, and I just wanted to throw that out there that that we we'd love to have a member on that committee. And if you have any interest at all in fulfilling that role, just contact me directly, and we can agenda that for a future meeting. Quick council recap. On January sixteenth, the council held a study session on limiting certain auto-related uses and directed staff to prepare an ordinance that would amend the planning regulations to prohibit new car washes, new gas stations, new car auto dealerships, and personal storage facilities like public storage everywhere in the city, and to create new use classifications for electric vehicle and green hydrogen charging fueling stations and alternative fuel vehicle showrooms. And this is obviously as an amendment to the planning regulations is going to come to you next, and we're tentatively scheduled to have a study session on this topic on March twenty eighth. The City Council also approved the acceptance and disposal of those certain easements associated with the biomed realty project that you had reviewed and recommended for council approval on the fourteenth of December, and the City Council approved the first reading of the ordinance authorizing the lease disposition and development agreement for the Christie Sites Affordable Housing Project, which was reviewed by you all at at study sessions in July and in December of last year. The second reading of that is ordinance is scheduled for February sixth, and that is a major milestone for a very large project. So I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of Valerie Bernardo, Miru Desai, and Kristy Kroll. And finally, the City Council authorized the release of a request for proposals for development of affordable ownership housing on the what we call the Adeline Sites, which is thirty six oh two Adeline and eleven thirty two thirty six Street, very small piece of property formerly owned by the redevelopment agency. That R F P was released on January seventeenth, and proposals are due February twenty sixth. Events to note that this morning, we conducted the biannual point in time count of unsheltered community members, and big thanks to Miru again, and the rest of the community development staff that participated in that and has been here at work since four this morning. And we did successfully complete that count. And just want to note that on January thirty first at five thirty, there's a purchase award reception at the senior center for the work purchased by Aaron Fong out of the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts. And on February twenty fourth, from ten A M. to two P M., the Community Services Department will be conducting a resource and job fair at the at the E C C L. And so if you know of employers that are looking for jobs, or if you know of seekers looking for jobs, definitely contact Community Services and participate. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chad. I appreciate it. So now we move on to ex parte communications and conflicts of interest. If anybody has any pertaining to the only agenda item that we have this evening, I thought that might be the case. Okay, so now we will move on to the public hearing, and we will start consideration of the grass prohibition and as the staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair Ghazoni, planning commission members. So both Christie and I are going to be doing this presentation together. So next slide, Chad. So Christie, can you give us a background and the council direction on this, please?
Sure. Good evening, Chair Ghazoni, Commissioners. I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you in person tonight. I'm a little under the weather. Miru, thank you for the nice introduction, and I would just like to first provide the commission with some background information and let you know how we got here. So first, back in June, the City Council requested to hold a study session item on four issues which appear on the slide before you: prohibition of two types of pesticide products, a voluntary wildfire program, and corresponding amendments to the city's nuisance provisions, and a prohibition on turf in future residential projects. In October, such a study session was held, and the council directed staff to prepare ordinances that would make those required changes to the planning commission regulations and to the municipal code. And as you'll see on the next slide, the commission is being asked to consider recommending two of the four changes to the City Council. Because the turf prohibition involves changes to the planning regulations, which is our city zoning code, state planning and zoning law requires that the planning commission make a recommendation to the council. And because the draft wildflower ordinance was actually drafted in conjunction with this turf prohibition, those changes are before you tonight as well, and staff is asking for your recommendation, even though it is not legally required. So with that said, I'll turn it to Miru to go over the proposed actions in more detail.
So like Christie mentioned, this is in front of you because it involves changes to the planning regulations, Title Nine, on which the commission has jurisdiction, and any changes to this regulations requires a recommendation from the commission before final approval by the council. Next slide, please. So the proposed changes that we are adding is a new subsection to the landscaping and screening provisions by adding the definition of turf. Staff's recommendation to use the term turf as opposed to grass is to ensure consistency with the with the city's water efficiency and landscape ordinance. Staff's recommendation to prohibit installation of turf in all development projects, as Christie mentioned, the council direction initially has been for only residential projects. The reason staff is doing that is because commercial projects actually sometimes install more turf and more frequently than the recent residential projects. Next slide, please. So this is the new code edition. It talks about where it's applicable. It defines turf, which is consistent with the definition of turf in our Welo, the Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, and it also provides an exception. And that exception as has been proposed is that whenever new development projects contain a public park or an open space area which is accessible to the public, in other words, POPOs, you know, publicly accessible private spaces, they can install turf as part of the publicly accessible landscaping. So that's the exception that we have created for turf. Next slide, please. The other minor changes are deletion or replacement of lawn. Us, we don't have a definition of lawn in our planning regulations, so the first change is just removing lawn and introducing the word turf, where we do have a definition. The second change is removing the term lawn as one of the features that you can include in the required landscaping. Next slide, please. Uh, there is a definition of landscaping, so in that definition, we are removing the term lawns. Next slide, please. I will let Christie explain this provision that we are adding.
Thanks, Miru. This section of the ordinance is the proposed amendment or the addition to the existing nuisance provision regarding weeds. Again, as I said earlier, the law doesn't legally require you your recommendation on this portion of the ordinance, but staff is requesting it anyway. The proposed changes here confirm that it is not a violation of the municipal code to grow and maintain native plants or wildflowers, as long as doing so doesn't pose a fire hazard. This ordinance is intended to respond to the council's request to confirm that its proposed wildflower program wouldn't result in any gardens that would be considered a nuisance under our code.
Slide please.
Next slide.
Yeah, so that concludes our presentation. I would mention that the commission received some comments by Commissioner Rod Henme. So you have that. We also have copies of that outside for folks to look at. If there are any questions for me or Christie, we would be happy to answer. Otherwise, our recommendation is that the commission recommend that the council approve the proposed amendments.
Question. So I was made aware of the recently passed A B fifteen seventy two law, which prohibits irrigated turf of in all properties, both new and existing. Where are you aware of this? And take and how does that? Why would this need this law as a municipal law be needed?
I'm going to let Christie respond to that.
Sure, I can take that. Thanks, Miru, and thanks, Commissioner Henme, for pointing that out. Yes, we're aware of A B fifteen seventy two. That new bill is actually a prohibition on the type of water that can be used to irrigate turf. So it's not a prohibition on turf. It's a prohibition on using potable water, which means drinkable water, to irrigate turf, beginning several years in the future and actually rolling out into, I think, the end date or the the last rollout date is twenty thirty one. So it wouldn't even begin until twenty twenty seven. And again, it's not, it doesn't really overlap with our ordinance because it regulates water. It doesn't regulate installation of turf, and that's what the council directed staff to prepare here is an ordinance that regulated installation of turf. So there's sort of two different issues.
Second question on that, is there that law differentiates between functional turf and non-functional turf in I think in an important way. The functional or non-functional turf is recreational use or community gathering space, which is important for residential projects, particularly for affordable housing projects. And so did you ever taken are you did you take into consideration those terms or those differentiations?
Sure. So again, since that bill applies to what you can water and not what you can grow or what you can install, you know, it's our staff's position that it it's not applicable to the drought and water-saving purpose of our ordinance, because we're we're attempting to regulate installation of turf in order to avoid any kind of water being used, and that's just regulating the water. In terms of the definition of turf, we're using the definition that's consistent with our internal Welo regulations, as Miru noted earlier. So and we've we actually have included in our definition that it does not include artificial turf, right? So we're confirming that it's just live turf that we're prohibiting installation of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. One, could you give some color on the council direction that was given? I can understand from the staff report that they did ask for a ban on the turf, but it's just not clear to me whether that is for the water conservation issue, or if that's to encourage pollinators. So I just want to understand a little bit more about the discussion and the direction that they gave.
Refer this to Christie as well, since I was not present at the council.
Sure, I'm happy to answer, and I know Chad was there, too. And if I miss anything, Chad, please feel free to supplement my answer. But Commissioner Martinez, to answer your question, the discussion included both of those issues. Obviously, the council was reviewing those four issues all at the same study session with the overall objective to introduce several ordinances, however many there were going to be, that would provide some environmentally friendly actions and environmentally friendly policies for the city to follow. So the, as you'll know, in the purpose section of the ordinance and the whereas clauses, you'll see that there's a lot of discussion about drought and about addressing drought in the state of California and locally. And so that was discussed, that the the turf ban was to be directed at at reducing water consumption via turf watering. And then the council also discussed the pollinator issue and noted, I believe, and Chad can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a connection between not installing turf and installing different landscaping such as wildflowers. So they go hand in hand there, and I think the council liked the idea that, you know, we could prohibit installation of turf and could also promote wildflower growth.
Thank you. And then one last question, and this is in regards to, let's say, decriminalizing growing native plants in place of turf. Is there a way to make sure people aren't just creating a sea of fox tails? As a dog owner, that's something that we see every summer in Emeryville and surrounding neighborhoods, this weed that's invasive and and very harmful and dangerous to household pets. So I'm wondering if if there's any way to make sure that a lawn full of fox tails doesn't appear if we were to pass this.
So interesting.
It's because it's not a fire hazard necessarily, but it's a different kind of hazard. It could be covered under health or community health, I think.
Something to definitely to consider.
Sure. And you'll note, Commissioner Martinez, sorry, Miru, to jump in on you, but you'll note that the wildflower program is still being developed by staff at the direction of the council. So it will come back, I think, to the council for, you know, a preview of with the proposed kind of policies and procedures.
And we can forward your concern to the council.
Okay, any others? Commissioner Ming?
So Christie and Miru, could you talk more about the exceptions? The item number four in the in the resolution, I think you talked about the exceptions if it's for public access use of open space. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
That was a direction that the council provided. That was a direct council direction that the exception be cowed out to allow turf, if necessary, during the design process in a public park or in a publicly accessible open area.
So it's basically is if the space is defined as public open space.
Correct.
Okay.
Publicly accessible open space, yes.
Okay, any Commissioner Chafe?
Thank you. I was wondering if you could give us a little bit more information on the types of turf that you're seeing come up in applications, both residential and non-residential recently, because you mentioned that there's more often turf suggested in residential areas. But I think you probably have a different view than we do of what the trends are.
Yeah, in the last, if you look at any, so all multifamily residential areas need to provide some common, what's called common open space. Not all of them need to provide publicly accessible open space. And the tendency is for them to provide amenity space and not necessarily turf areas. That's has been my experience in all this time. Where we have seen turf, in the exception being the the new brand new Hui Chin Park, which does have turf. But where we see more turf is when commercial projects, which are also required to provide common open space, they tend to have these large, you know, beautiful lawns. And if you look at Verhun properties, in almost all of them, they do have it. I can walk you through, and it may be small patches, some are small, some are big, but just anecdotally, I feel that the commercial development all tends to use more turf than in residential just because of amenity space. And then there's stormwater measures as well that the residential projects have to kind of comply with.
That's helpful. And I think I misspoke in my question. I reversed it. So yeah, in commercial, do you have a sense of, you know, not to hold you to any numbers here, any specific projects, but in the places where you're seeing it in the commercial developments, is it often in publicly owned privately owned public open space, or is it in like smaller patches in a median strip or something like that?
It's a mix. So for example, one that is kind of on the larger side and which is a POPO is the Emery, the Emery Station Greenway, not the Greenway, the latest unbuilt on sixty third Street, the Emery Station Overland Project. That, if you recall, has a huge open area in front. A portion of that is a POPO, and that includes smaller amount of turf. But if you look at Emery Station East, they have on an upper level a common open space, and that is all which is actually open to the public, and that is turf as well. So it's a mix.
I'm trying to envision the last one that you were just talking about.
The Emery Station Overland?
Yeah.
So if you remember, if you recall, you have a garage building and you have a R and D building.
Yep.
Facing the post office.
Yep.
Right? So the entry to that building is a large open area.
Yeah.
And that is primarily turf. A portion of that is common open space, and a portion of that is POPO, which is publicly accessible open space. And then if you see the other Emery Station West, which is not turf, not is the one that is on the upper level, that's kind of an open space, but that's not turf.
Got it.
So there's, you know, it's not always the case, but yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the public hearing. If there are any, there's no audience members here in the chamber. If there are any online, you can speak now about this matter, and you will have three minutes to speak. Chad, do we have any online speaker cards?
We do, and I do see that the speaker card was submitted by somebody who's on the Zoom meeting. So I guess I would ask that if the speaker, if Ms. Krolowski of PGA Design wants to read or wants to wants to speak, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand function in Zoom. Otherwise, I can read your comment. Okay. Yes, I do have raised hand. Can you can go ahead and unmute?
Okay, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, I am Karen Krolowski. I'm a principal landscape architect with PGA Design in Oakland. Passing an ordinance to ban turf installation in any new project, I feel is not necessary and is redundant to existing M Welo and A B fifteen seventy two. Also, consider the impact of banning turf areas in private multifamily projects. This is not the intent of any existing legislation in California regarding water conservation. There is a need for this type of landscape of private shared spaces, such as podium-level spaces, which are often not able to be made publicly accessible. The existing M Welo or the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, which has been in effect for over fifteen years, already excludes the installation of turf on projects unless it is defined as functional turf, meaning it must be used as recreational space. This definition of functional turf is set to be updated to a stricter definition, new revision of M Welo set to be released this year. In addition, M Welo and Edmud have further restrictions on implementing turf in projects, both enforce a maximum of twenty five percent of landscape on a project to be turf or high-water use plants. This this really limits the amount of turf that can be installed. In addition, as mentioned, a new law was passed this year pertaining to existing non-functional turf for existing projects with non-functional turf. A B fifteen seventy two prohibits prohibits irrigating non-functional turf with potable water, which in effect will dissuade people from keeping turf that goes brown. And those project types include D S A projects, commercial, H O A, institutional, and multifamily, excluding affordable housing. This is a phased approach, and water districts are required to release compliance plans. If an ordinance is passed mentioning turf, I recommend that it comply with the terms and definitions and notions already in place in M Welo and A B fifteen seventy two, specifically referencing functional turf and where it is allowed. The city and water districts can work towards enforcing best practices for water application on built projects. This, in my opinion, would have a greater effect at saving water. The designs that landscape architects are producing are already very water efficient, and the irrigation systems are are incredibly water efficient. Where we see failures in overuse of water is in maintenance and where controllers are simply left unprogrammed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chad, do we have any other speaker cards?
We do not.
No. Okay, the public hearing is closed at seven oh six, and I'll bring back this topic for deliberation by the commissioners. Anybody do you have anything to say, Commissioner Marx? Comments? Mr. Chafe?
Comments, right? And I have a lot of mixed feelings about this. I think in general, the the sentiment behind it is correct, and you know, there's there's a lot of good intention here. I concur with a lot of what the speaker just said, the public comment, because I think that some of it is, what we're looking at tonight is potentially overgeneralized and could lead to some unintended consequences. For example, you know, one thing that I've heard about before is installing clover lawns or turf. Well, that's the question, would that be considered turf or not? You know, it's a lower mow requirement, and I think turf is somehow defined in terms of the number of times per year that it needs to be mowed, but it's somewhat subjective. And there are, I think, benefits to clover lawns that that are better than just having a regular grass lawn as we think about it usually. But that's not addressed here. So I do have some questions like that. My one other big concern right now is around artificial turf. I really personally do not want to see more artificial turf. I think that it has some potential for harm that may outweigh the water savings that come with not installing a lawn. So that's kind of where I'm thinking right now. I would love to hear others' comments before I make any final decisions.
Have a short comment. So I've seen in other European countries that are more eco-friendly. They care about the water, rainwater, and they manage it in their property and keep it and use this water for watering the turf or whatsoever. I'm not sure if you can add a line that, hey, if you're managing your water, this is your own, it's not a public water, clean water, they can have the turf. I'm not sure how possible it is, but it's going to come. Thank you.
Is she ahead, me?
So I asked Karen Kralowski to speak because as soon as I saw this proposed ordinance, I reached out to landscape architects because obviously I don't, or not obviously, I don't know very much about this particular issue in terms of impacts. And so I asked the people that I would consider experts, who are the landscape architects, about it. So you have in front of you the statements from four landscape architects, who are all quite renowned and persons who are leading firms in the Bay Area. And for the public consumption, are we able to put it on screen then, share screen so that others can see it? I'm not intending to read all these comments, but just to just to make sure that the public can see it. And also, secondly, I'd like to just briefly summarize them, so. Okay, so the first one is just that the, it's important that it not only be publicly accessible open space, but open space for, that's private, that is within in development for use by residents. And I think the point is that there are very strong reasons that were advanced why it should be exempted from public open space because turf is a material that is really the best material for these kind of recreational uses, such as the Emeryville Park, right in front of my Christie Avenue Commons, where people use it to sit, people use it to play, dogs running around, children running around, there are fairs that are held on that turf, et cetera. And that's the use that it wants to be. But most importantly, this is also true for residential open space that is private. And particularly for, probably not even particularly, but also, but very strongly for affordable housing. That we oftentimes have, not large area, we have a recreational space that is used by residents for, and that wants to be turf. And the ordinance that I mentioned, 1572, Ms. Crowe is correct that it only governs potable water use, but effectively it outlaws turf because nobody's going to, not, nobody's going to install turf that's un-irrigated, number one, because it'll just die. And secondly, there are very few projects, are many projects, that do not have non-potable water use, that is recycled water that they can use for a project without paying additional money. So I think essentially that ordinance is intended to end the use of turf, except for what they say are functional turf areas. And as I mentioned, those are community areas. Recreational use are community gathering spaces. And so they have made a difference between what they call functional turf and non-functional turf. And I think that's a very important distinction to make because the idea of eliminating turf that's in, you know, next to the street and just strips of, strips of grass, I totally agree with. But the idea of eliminating turf completely, I think, will lead to unintended consequences, such as the increase of use of artificial turf. Because that is the most likely replacement for turf that has been eliminated for recreational spaces. So, so that was the first, actually, all four of these people are saying the same thing. The second one, Gary Strang, if the lawn is intensely used for sunbathing or picnicking, I think it can be an important amenity. He also questions what's driving the need for this regulation because I think all four of these landscape architects also said that water use is very strictly prohibited or very strictly governed. And so the, this one particular item is not likely to make a substantial impact on water use in Emeryville since all the other water use on landscaping is already strictly governed. Under Lindner Gates, they should allow for usable, community accessible open space, not just publicly accessible, same thing. Many developments have a lawn area for children within the development to use that is not available to the public. And again, I think this is very critical. And then finally, Karen Kralowski made her very thoughtful statement. So admittedly, yes, the new law doesn't go into effect until 27 and some parts of it don't go into effect till 2031. But like I say, I think it affect, it does effectively eliminates turf. And that's not only in new developments, which this law is only for new developments. It's for all developments, existing developments. So, so I think that's, that's important. So I personally don't think this, this law is necessary and I would vote against it. But if the commission thinks that it is fine to approve it, I would really strongly encourage that it exempts also what they call functional turf areas in private residential. Frankly, I would say even private, commercial and pri, I would say in functional turf areas in all, in all developments. That is spaces that are used for recreation or community gathering areas. Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. Before I begin my comments, I just wanted to ask staff to please describe what the variance process would look like should we pass this resolution and the council were to pass an ordinance? And if someone wanted to, you know, go ahead and create a turf lawn on their development, what would that process look like?
So it would need, other than what is allowed under the, what is
Correct. If they wanted a variance.
Then that would need to make variance findings, which would be extremely difficult to make.
And then would that be a planning commission process?
It would be a planning commission process, which can be appealed to the council. But the findings for making variance are very difficult and there are much more to do with the physical topography of land than anything else. So staff would not be able to make those findings if somebody applied for a variance.
In that case, I feel like I would align my thoughts with Commissioner Chafe's that I think this is a step in the right direction, but there are still questions. I've heard the same thing about clover as a ground cover, that it puts nitrogen back into the ground rather than stripping it all out. And so it contributes to the health of the soil. So I, I, I'm hesitant to pass this without having a clear understanding of what the wildflower program looks like, I think. I think those go hand in hand, and I understand that this is something we're being asked to do first. But I do think we're moving in the right direction. I still have that question about fox tails as well. So the definition of weed is, I think, important and the definition of turf is important before we move this forward.
Ms. Ming?
I want to share some of my observations. I have been designing multifamily in both affordable, 100% affordable housing and the market rate condo projects for the past six years. I, one of my observations is many times, for example, if we're doing affordable housing, especially for the urban infill projects, we oftentimes don't, in order to get more housing units, we oftentimes ask for concessions to, they've asked for concessions to reduce the required open space. So many times, maybe they require a lot of, like, for example, some city require like 200 square footage per open space per units. And sometimes we just cannot provide that. And then maybe some project will even provide zero open space, which is a trade-off for the project. We wanted to provide more housing, but at the same time, the residents lose the opportunity to have a usable open space. And for the market rate condo projects, I worked on, I don't really recall any of the projects I worked on, we provided turf for the projects. Many times I think they want to avoid the Welo requirement, things like that. So that is one of my observations. And in addition to that is Karen from PGA, she mentioned about the recycling water program of many water districts. Actually, one of my projects in Fremont, they are not under EP mod. They, I think they are under Alameda Utility, it's another water district. It's so another, under another water department. But the city of Fremont actually encouraging new development to provide gray water system. So the private developer can, if they wanted to provide a gray water system for their irrigation and collect, for example, the sink, use the sink water, use the shower water for, to allocate some of the irrigation, they can get incentives for their projects. So yeah, so that's mostly two of my observations for my multifamily design practice.
Thank you. And for myself, I'll say I really, the intent of this measure is, I think, very admirable. It's an important one. But I think that various commissioners have pointed out weaknesses in it. I think it has the potential to incentivize development of undesirable surfaces, such as artificial turf. I think that it lacks nuance in that it only articulates one specific thing, parks, where turf is acceptable, but there may be private instances in which you might have playgrounds for children who are only residents of a building, and that would be an ideal place to have turf. I think there would be room for some sort of variance that might allow flexibility for some of the different situations that might come up that aren't anticipated here. But I think that would be, need to be a clear process that doesn't seem arbitrary and so that it's understandable. And I think that Commissioner Henry's emphasis on the concept of functional turf is something that would really be here, useful here. And while I really like the purpose of this, I think it would achieve its purpose better if it had a little more complexity and granularity in what it, the regulation it's trying to propose as to pose. To me, it feels like it paints with a little bit too broad of a brush and as a result, doesn't catch the nuances of what will probably happen in the years coming down. Having said all that, what are people's thoughts besides, now that we've articulated our thoughts, but what are people thinking we would do with what we're being asked to?
Can we hear back from staff to see if they
Yeah.
might have a plan on, on moving this forward, maybe with some added details?
That's good, yeah.
If we hear consensus from the commission that there are, that there are nuances that could be added that we could bring back, we, we could do that. Alternatively, if there's consensus that you don't want to move, that you would just straight up want to recommend the city council not do this, that's another alternative that's available. And I don't know, Kristi, if you had any more to add, since this is part of a package.
No, so those are the two that I was going to suggest. If we hear consensus from the commission, that they just want to decline to recommend the ordinance or at least the turf ban portion of the ordinance, then we can take, we can take that direction and it'll, it'll move on to council with your lack of recommendation. If you are asking for staff to bring it back to you with some changes, we could also do that. Regardless, I think that you can make a recommendation tonight on the wildflower portion of the ordinance. And we won't adopt, you wouldn't adopt the attached resolution, but you could provide some direction to staff that you would recommend that section.
As for clarification on process here. So if we were not, and this is about the influence that the planning commission has. So I'm considering, in other words, if we were to amend the ordinance to add, to add the word functional turf as, and add it to the exceptions, private functional turf. Or we could even make it private residential functional turf. Because right now, there is an exception for publicly accessible open spaces. Would, and then were to pass that, and then it would go to city council. This, the alternative is not to recommend anything at all. And my question is, which might have more influence on the city council? In other words, if we were not to recommend it at all, could city council just go ahead and improve it as they wish, without any modifications? Or would a modified, amended one passed by us perhaps have more influence on what they would do?
My recommendation would be a modified recommendation to the council would have more impact.
Thank you. Yeah, seems logical.
And just to jump in as well, all of your testimony this evening will be, you know, covered in the staff report for the council, once it does go to the council, regardless of what your recommendation is.
Thank you. This has all been really helpful. I think what I'm stuck on now, given all of the comments that were made, is what is functional turf? And how do we define that? And how will developers or project proponents define it? And how can we or they prove whether they're defining it correctly? Does anyone have any recommendations on that? Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the AB 1572, which, which is the state law that was passed, defines that term. Now, we may not have it in our, I'm sure we don't have it, the same definition in our city ordinance. But the state law defined functional turf, in short, and as a summary, recreational use or community gathering space. And everything else is what they call NFT, non-functional turf. So if we were to use that term, or we could even use, say, we're using the term in the context of AB 1572, there is a state law defined term.
Chair, may I respond to that? Chair, may I respond to that? I guess I, I appreciate that definition. I'm glad someone came up with a definition. I'm just imagining a project coming before us and, and the developer saying that, um, area of turf is recreational, but we may not agree necessarily. How, how could we determine? Like obviously the planning commission can make a judgment, but how can we defend that judgment, I guess? If we're pushing it back and saying, we don't think this is recreational, we don't think this is properly classified, do we have something to go with? Is there a further definition or nuance there? Or is it really just our, our definition of recreational versus theirs?
I just wanted to say I found the definition of functional turf in AB 1572. Functional turf means a ground cover surface of turf located in a recreational use area or community space. Turf enclosed by fencing or other barriers to permanently preclude human access for recreation or assembly is not functional turf. So it's a very broad definition. Can you step on it? That's functional turf.
That definition, if you had a, uh, a development which had a private play area for children, it would probably be fenced in. And the park that we set up on the, out by the-
Well, if, if the fence is to preclude human access-
Okay, well, if you have something where children from the building have access, then I would assume, okay.
Then it's-
Okay, gotcha.
Also, I did watch a, uh, presentation on this new law and they did give examples of commercial buildings with, uh, in spaces that they, you know, were saying were not functional and that sort of thing. But you're, you're absolutely right. It's interpretive. And so it would, I would assume be first interpreted by our staff for any project that came forward and proposed the turf. And then it would be interpreted, then it would be defined by us or, or not. And of course, it could be challenged.
Ms. Ming?
Yeah, I, initially I have the same question, like how, how to define the functional, uh, recreational use. But normally in zoning code, there is a definition regarding usable open space. And I'm not, um, sure, Emeryville's requirements, but some cities, uh, they require minimum six feet or minimum 10 feet, uh, for usable open space. But if it's a 10 by 10, would it be functional turf? Maybe not. So I think it's, um, I think it's probably necessary to define the size of it or at least the activity of it.
Chad, would it be possible? I mean, I think in a sense maybe better than saying, oh, we just define this, um, to say that we would like to have an allowance for functional turf, look, and just say, rather than spelling it out completely ourselves, say, look to the state statute for guidance and craft something that does that? Because I think it might take a little while to really think that through and come up with a good definition.
The issue that Commissioner Schiff brought on, uh, in terms of interpretation, that is going to be kind of always present, no matter how much we go into defining recreational, right? So that, uh, that, that's going to be a problem. No matter, we cannot come up with a definition that is where some amount of judgment will need to be made without any parameters defined. So, so if we, if we, if we agree on that concept, then functional turf as defined in this bill would make the most sense because it's already defined. It's a law that is coming our way and, and would be consistent with that. But we cannot, I'm not sure, no matter how much research we do, that we can totally address the issue that Commissioner Schiff brought on.
An, an question I would ask commissioners, besides this issue of functional turf for residential, what are your thoughts in terms of including it, potentially including it as an exception for commercial or other projects? And I guess one example that I would think of is, uh, I don't recall the name of the project, but the office project on Christie Avenue, uh, at the end of Christie Avenue, where they had the courtyard that led, that was the entry into their office project, as you recall. The front part of that courtyard on Christie was popol. That would qualify. But the middle of that courtyard was not, um, it was private. And as I recall, it had a sort of turf on area. I may be not sure about that, but let's just for the moment assume that it was, that there was a turf area that people could picnic on and sit and whatever, and that was private. And would we also in, consider that to be part of this? We, would we consider commercial projects to be part of this exemption?
I, I guess I should speak up in this meeting, maybe for a minute. I don't see any super compelling arguments why commercial turf needs to be accepted. I, I do share my fellow commissioners' concerns that one of the unintended consequences we could have from this is people just using astroturf instead. Some of the other things that have been raised, um, by these landscape architects and so forth. As far as redundancy goes, um, it's clearly not redundant. It's doing some different things. And also on top of that, even if it is, I think if we see something as reflecting the values in our community, then there's nothing wrong with us having our own ordinance on that subject because higher echelons of government, um, may change their own rules. So in this particular case, we have lawns, which are, you know, uh, in the bullseyes of, uh, a lot of environmental urbanists because not only do you have, on one hand, you have, uh, you have a lawn which, uh, is, is going to be, uh, you know, cared for with water. And currently we don't have all the reach of non potable water to keep those irrigated in our city, um, as well as maintained with pesticides. And then you have the opportunity cost of something that is more friendly to, um, our pollinators or beetles or bees, et cetera. That's a fairly important, uh, thing to be looking at, um, even though it's, it's, uh, I think not on everybody's radars. I think everybody here is aware of, of the issues that are going into this. I definitely agree that the, um, the definition of wildflowers, uh, all of that, um, needs some work before we can sit here and say, well, we're absolutely sure about this. But I know, like, for example, this last development on Christie, um, I don't believe there's any turf, um, in that entire affordable development. And instead, not only is there no turf, um, in that development, but their common open space was actually turned into publicly open space so that, um, we could create that Given that, it's hard to say, well, but I can also see why, like, your commercial project needs a lawn inside of it. So no, I don't really believe in adding that to the exception. Yeah. That's all my comments on that. Thank you.
One correction is not all of their common open space was publicly accessible. The, the one on the north side was, but the other two buildings, their com- their open space was not. And I don't recall whether they had any turf in that or not. I would just say that I have done affordable housing projects where they have used small areas of turf for, for the purposes that have already been mentioned.
And just for the purpose of moving this item forward, I would suggest that the planning commission make a recommendation to council with the amendment of adding, um, private residential functional turf, um, and passing the, or recommending the wildflower ordinance, so making that, um, that one change. Because I do agree with Commissioner Wax that I, I, I don't see a compelling argument to, um, add that to commercial space as well.
Well, and Commissioner Wax raised an interesting point is whether it's, uh, multifamily residential only and private or single family or double or dual family residential would not be allowed to install turf. So they would not fit under that exception, which I guess would apply to a backyard as well, front and backyard.
You don't see a lot of single or duplex development in Emeryville these days.
That's true.
Everyone wants to maximize their envelope. And I think with recent state laws, if they can get two to four, um, on one property, they're going to do it.
But the rule would be that if you were to build such a project, you wouldn't be able to have any turf in your front or your backyard.
Yeah.
Just for context, uh, we have been receiving a number of ADU projects in, uh, in the RM district. And typically what ends up happening after, uh, there are certain landscaping requirements, but again, they're maximizing the use of land. So we don't see anybody wanting to put grass, right? I mean, and this is anecdotal information, you know, in the last year, uh, we have received several ADU applications. So it's just for context.
Okay, given all that, does anybody have any ideas or suggestions on what we would propose for this?
I'll make my suggestion in the form of a motion that we would move the resolution with the amendment of adding an exception for private residential functional turf.
Seconded. Okay. You want to do a roll on that?
One sec. Commissioner Martinez, can you make sure that you include the wildflower portion as well?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought that was just included. And of course, I make the recommendation to move forward with, um, the work on the wildflower ordinance. And then outside of that motion, I just want to make sure that staff has the direction that they would come back to, um, planning commission with specific definitions on wildflowers and what weeds are, so we can avoid some of those pitfalls with, um, fox tails and make sure that, um, clover and other more appropriate ground cover doesn't get folded in with, um, harmful, um, grass and, um, water intensive and pesticide intensive plantings.
Just to clarify, uh, so you're saying that you, the commission, would like to see the wildflower ordinance come-
I would. If, are folks amenable to that?
Yes.
Sure.
Christie, wildflower, would that go in Title IX? It would not go in Title IX, correct?
Well, so the program, and Chad can speak more to this, um, the program is going to be adopted in, like, or be, um, uh, promulgated at the administrative level and will be brought, you know, for, because the, um, council has just directed that staff prepare a program. It's not going to be codified or an ordinance or anything like that. It's just going to be a, a program and, um, staff will explain how it works. So there's no codification or anything. So I think it's perfectly acceptable to, um, you know, bring the program to the planning commission as well.
Great, thank you. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
And just a clarification regarding functional turf, we will add somewhere that the definition of functional turf would be taken from the AB, if that is okay? Yeah?
Yeah.
I, apologies, I didn't catch you. I made the second. Chair Gitzoni. Okay. On the motion to recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance with the addition of an exception for private residential functional turf and a request that wildflower program be brought back to the commission for review and comment, motion made by Commissioner Martinez, seconded by Chair Gitzoni. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Chaffe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ming?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram?
Aye.
And Chair Gitzoni?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. That takes us to planning commissioner comments. Do we have any comments you want to make? Okay, Commissioner Martinez?
I just want to thank Commissioner Henme for all the phone calls and research that he did this week. I think it was really helpful to the dialogue tonight. So thank you for the extra homework.
You're welcome. I wanted to ask about that we all received an email about truck traffic and I don't really know what it's about, but I'm just wondering, is that something staff would be addressing? Is that something that probably I would not think the planning commission would worry about that at all? Okay.
Okay, if there are no further comments, then this meeting is adjourned at 7:43. Thank you all very much.